Okay. Welcome to Lower Gwinnett's Board of Supervisors meeting. The title stands for Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming. Please be aware that tonight's meeting is being video recorded. So we have a very special. We have a very, oh, Carol, could you please note we had an executive session on personal matter? Thank you. So it's on the, it's on the agenda here, and I didn't think this day was ever going to happen because you don't expect people you work with for so many years to not be there at some point. Carol, I love you. You're, you've been fantastic. I haven't, I've said that to anybody that will listen. Right? So you've been a joy to me in the last 12 years, and when I call you or ask you a question, if you, if you don't know the answer, which is hardly ever, you, you get back to me and you let me know. And boy, are you going to be missed. So, but you're, you're, you know, it's the old saying, when one door closes, another one opens. So I don't know what your plans are, where you're going, but you deserve to have a lot of fun. And I'm, I'm sure you will. We also have a proclamation here.
Yeah, I thought about that some day. I said I did a proclamation.
Well, that's right. That's right. So I'm Yeah, I typed this last night, right? So, yeah, okay. Whereas Carol B. Colbrith has provided over 23 years of service to Lower Gwinnett Township, serving as an administrative assistant since 1998. And whereas Ms. Colbert has appointed the, was appointed the right-to-know officer and has also served in this capacity since 2014. Whereas in 2004, Ms. Colbert earned the designation of Certified Municipal Clerk, which is awarded by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, Inc. To those municipal clerks who complete demanding educational requirements and who have recorded a significant contribution to their local government, their community, and state. And whereas Ms. Colbert has assisted in the Montgomery County Association of Township Officials overseeing the bi-annual convention and has served as a notary public commission for Lower Gwinnett Township. And now, therefore, the Lower Gwinnett Board of Supervisors have the distinct honor of proclaiming to recognize Carol B. Colbrith for the many years of service and contributions to Lower Gwinnett Township and wishes her great success, happiness, in her retirement.
I have a picture, Carol. All the board to come down. Now, do you get them, Bill? This is your
The 23 years of It's like 23 months. And I couldn't have worked for better supervisors. They have bosses, Craig, Jamie, and I, I hope I miss you all.
If I could just say one word, you ordered too much, so now you're bringing it home with you, right? But I just want to thank you, Carol. I've known you for half my life. Almost, almost half my life. I'm not, I'm a little older than that, but we've been through a lot, good times and bad. You're at the wedding. You saw my kids grow up. And you were a good, great coworker, but you were a better friend. I am going to miss you, and thank you, Brett.
If I could just second everything that's already been said up to this point, and I don't want to get too emotional here, but it's a good emotion. It's been a wonderful ride with you. You're thoughtful, you're courteous, you're smart, and you are the proverbial glue that has kept us together. God hope we don't fall apart. But I love you too, and you're going to be greatly missed, but see you around, not goodbye, right?
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Brand couldn't be here tonight, so he, he wishes you many thanks. And I know he's going to be seeing you at some point, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, but he couldn't come, so I just wanted to let you know that in case you didn't know. So, you know, you know, what's nice about the room right here is, I'm thinking, well, maybe with a couple of exceptions, everybody in this room has worked with you, loves you, is going to miss you, and we just can't say enough good things about you. And, but retirement is, I'm looking forward to it at some point, hopefully not too long. And it's exciting and a little scary all at the same time. But, you know, you're welcome to come back and take minutes if you'd like. I'm sure we can find a place if you get bored. But, okay, so, so thank you, thank you again. So tonight, you still got to take minutes. You're still working. Okay. Speaking of minutes, we have received the minutes from the September 14th meeting. Are there any questions from the supervisors? Any questions from members of the audience? Okay, can I have a motion? Have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Received the year-to-date budget report and balance sheet for July 2021. Are there any questions from the supervisors?
That is not prepared for tonight. They'll have to be tabled.
Okay. Thank you. Craig, could you look into that? Because we've had a couple of these that have been tabled. And we really need to
Yes, I will talk with the finance director about this.
Thank you very much. Next up, Resolution 2021-17, Acceptance of the Need of Dedication for the Sewer at 545 North Bethlehem Pike. That's Pearland at Gwinnett. For those of you who don't know, that's right next to Abington Health Center. That's the new development there. We need, do we need a mo, we need a motion as a resolution. Are there any questions from members of the Board of Supervisors? Any members from, any questions from the audience? Jamie, are we missing anybody that, from Zoom?
There are no questions.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next up is Authorization to Bid the HVAC Replacement at Penland Woods. Craig, can you fill us in on that? Or maybe is Fred the better one to pick on tonight?
Well, this is just an authorization to bid. The HVAC system down at Penland Woods is over 20 years old. It's time for replacement. We have budgeted a number for this year, and we're just going to go out to bid. Gilmore has prepared a bid. And if authorized to do so, we will go out to bid and try to get that replaced by the end of the year.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? No? Audience, any questions? Okay.
I make a motion authorizing the HVAC, to bid the HVAC replacement at Penland Woods.
Thank you.
I'm second to that motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next up, Acceptance of the Proposal from AMO Environmental Study for Act Two Final Closeout. Craig?
Yes, this is to try to get a final act two closeout at Penambler Park. AMO Environmental, Environmental Decisions will be performing some soil samples at 15 different locations with 41 samples in the amount of $34,036. This is required by DEP to proceed with the final act two closeout.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the board? Any questions from the audience? Jamie, any Zoom questions? Okay. All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Excuse me.
Is that a second? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Resolution 2021-18, Authorization to Submit Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement. It's our traffic engineer here today.
He is not a, he had another meeting that I asked, I asked him to not come tonight so he can attend that other meeting. This is simply a resolution for me to sign an agreement with PennDOT. July 27th, we have a traffic maintenance agreement that we went into with Armor &amp; Sons that was approved by the board. The next step of that is to provide the, the maintenance agreement to PennDOT so that we are under compliance with the PennDOT regulations. So this resolution is basically given, asking you guys to give me the authorization to send our maintenance agreement to PennDOT to inform PennDOT that we are under the same conformance that PennDOT is under for our traffic signals.
Okay. So everybody got that on the board? Is there any questions? Board of Supervisors? No. Any, any questions from the audience? Jamie?
No.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up, Proposal for the Replacement of the Public Works Garage Doors. Now Fred, this is definitely you.
The garage doors in the Public Works Building, you probably saw in the bills throughout the winter, the emergency repairs, especially on the one that faces the parking lot. Those doors weren't replaced when the other doors were done for the fire station. So this replacement would be because they're in bad shape, and it would also match the energy efficiency and everything of the new doors that are in the fire station. I don't know how old those doors are. I wasn't here when they were put in, but I think they're, yeah, they might be original to the building when that part was put on.
What's that, 1988, Craig, or 86?
Yeah, the, the one, like I said, the one we use the most especially is it's patched back together for now, but it always seems to break at 3 o'clock in the morning after we were snowplowing. Leaves us hanging, trying to get it down. So we're asking that we can replace those doors. And on top of being more reliable, they are more energy efficient, holding the heat in the building. So that's the, the lowest proposal also was from the same company that actually did the doors at the firehouse.
At the firehouse, they seem to work out pretty well.
So they're the same exact door. They'll look the same. Not that you can see them all at the same time.
Now, yeah, yeah.
But they, they do, they are the same door.
Now, is that a 10-foot tall or 12?
It is 14.
14?
Yeah, it's 14 feet high, 14 feet.
It's a pretty big door.
They are big.
Craig, was this in the budget? Okay.
We're not voting on the actual bid tonight.
Yeah, there was three. There was three quotes provided.
So that was, that was my question. We have Allen Doors, we have Jader Company and Monarch, and I think your recommendation is Monarch.
Monarch. Jay Door's original price is lower, but if you read their proposal, they, they didn't include the painting in that.
So that's needed. That's one of my
So right, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be the same color. We'd have to get them painted. That puts them over.
So the painting is a bone.
Ends up making that was more expensive. So Monarch is the cheapest price, given we want to match the building.
And Monarch was the person who installed, or the company
Who did the other doors, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any more questions from the Board of Supervisors? Any questions for the audience? Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye. Okay. Next up, Resolution 2021-19, Authorization to Submit PICO Green Region Grant Application. So Craig, what are, what are we talking about here for the grant?
We're looking at a $15,000 grant. It would be a $7,500, $7,500 grant from PICO and a $7,500 match from the township. While, when I was talking to Sandy for the capital budget for 2022, she informed me that several benches and several picnic tables would have to be replaced this year. Probably the same day, I got an email and a call from PICO saying that they're, they're looking for applications for a grant for open space. My question was, can I put picnic tables and benches in for an open space grant? I don't know how successful we're going to be with this because it wasn't as sexy as they thought it should be. But they said it would be, it would qualify as long as the benches and picnic tables weren't specifically addressed looking at a soccer field or a baseball field, like if it was on the trails, which they are, or in active recreation that is not specifically looking at a field, a baseball or a playing field.
That's, that's different.
Definitely.
They don't want a dedicated venue.
Yeah, they don't want us buying bleachers for a football field.
Okay, I got it.
It's worth a shot. I think it's a long shot, but it's worth putting in for.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So is this grant, are we applying, how many benches, park benches, and picnic tables are we actually applying for? I didn't see it in here. I saw that it, the amount of $7,500, but I don't know, how, what does that actually look like in benches and park picnic tables?
Yeah, I don't know. Jamie, do you remember if you know that?
I'm pretty sure it's, it's eight. It's spread between three parks. But I do have the quotation with where that price came from, so I'll, we'll put that in the manager's report this week.
So in the, in the resolution, it identifies Oxford Park, Penland Woods, Penambler, and Penland Park. Already saying, okay, so Penland Park and Penland Woods, okay.
Yeah, we have them as separate.
So are they, are they identifying specific benches, specific picnic tables, and are we assuming that it's going to be equitably distributed or?
Correct.
Yeah, we went through each park and evaluated the park benches and the picnic tables to see which ones were in need of replacement. And Sandy had already looked at that because she was getting it prepared for the, for the budget. So that's how we determined which ones needed to be replaced, and that's, that's the, the number that we used when we got the proposal, when she got the information. So that will be what we use for the grant application.
And is the Green Region Open Space Program, did it allow us to apply for any other opportunities for our open space or our parks? Meaning, could we have also applied for anything additional?
If we had a project ready to go, yes.
So we're not shovel-ready on any projects as far as moving forward?
Correct.
Okay. And when does the grant program, when is the timeframe?
It's due on, it's usually due September 30th, but they just sent an extension that because of the hurricane, they're extending that till the end of October.
I think the middle of October, yeah. Isn't it 17th, I think?
But it might be the 19th.
Is there a cap on the amount of money?
Yeah.
What's the cap?
10,000 is the max.
Okay. So this will be in the capital budget if we don't get it at PICO Grant. It'll probably be in there anyway because we may not know before December. So we may see that same number again coming up.
What, what is the plan if we don't get the grant? Are we still going to
It would be in, it would be in the capital budget for 2022. It'll be one of the projects for 2022.
Okay.
So when we were, I was talking to Sandy about upcoming projects. She brought this up. Like I said, the same day I got this PICO grant information, so that's when I reached out to PICO and see if it was possible to get this.
Just, I'm sorry to bring up another question, and I didn't want to cut you off. Is, is there an opportunity for us to get additional playground equipment? Or like, did it restrict, I guess I'm trying to understand what the grants restrictions were as far as
It was for open space, but not, not playground equipment. Like I said, it's not bleachers, it's, it's not, it's not benches for a football field or for a soccer field. It's for trails. If you're looking out onto open space and enjoying the open space and the green space, they would accept that. So, but
So I didn't understand. So a playground looking out on an open space would not?
No.
Okay. Okay, so it's to improve or acquire open space?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Would that type of grant cover landscaping to, to revert a park to a meadow or something like that?
It will, it will cover projects like that if there were projects because it's basically open space, passive recreation, stormwater management. You can be, you can use, like, for instance, we used, we got this grant a few years ago, and we put a rain guard in at Penland Woods with the grant funds. So it can be used for those types of things. It just has to fall in line with whatever the guidelines are. But it's active pen, active recreation, like playgrounds and stuff. It, it isn't, that's not one of the eligible.
Thanks, Jamie. Is it a yearly grant?
Yes. And actually, when you receive the grant, you also get the, if you receive it, if you're awarded the grant, you get the opportunity to apply again during the bonus round. They send a bonus round application to anybody who was a recipient as well, so.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions from members of the audience or a line?
We do have a hand raised. I'll unmute him.
Why I'm muted?
Yes.
I just want to comment that the EAC, we saw this, I think Carol passed it along to us. But it came in so late that we didn't have a chance to respond, but knowing that it's a yearly grant, the, the EAC will be working with Craig and others to work on what we want to do for next year. Just so you, so I know there was a comment, what other things could we be doing? We looked at it in the EAC, but just wasn't enough time to put together a proposal, so we'll, we'll look at this for next year for sure.
Thanks, Mark. Are there any more questions? No?
No.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is authorize the acceptance of the mowing bid. Okay, Craig, do you have any information on the mowing bid, or Fred?
Yeah. So we went out, we put the mowing bid out. We had the opening on September 22nd. There were two bids submitted. One was from our current contractor, M&amp;M, and the other one was from Brightview Landscapes LLC. It appears that the, the M&amp;M landscaping, their bid amount was $455,828, and Brightview came in at $311,089. So our recommendation for the three-year mowing contract would be to award it to Brightview Landscapes of Langhorne for a total contract price of $311,089. And the contract would begin in March and end in March 2022 and end November 30th, 2024.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on that. I, I think that, I, I know that includes the parks, mowing, and so forth. But that, that seems like a lot of money to spend on mowing. And I just wonder if the township can commit to reducing that amount of money by replacing not the playing fields, but other spaces with low or no maintenance landscaping. My other comment would be around mowing. And the, if we're going toward lower environmental impact in the future, which I hope we are, what can be done to reduce the environmental impact of mowing in terms of emissions and so forth? So I, I want to put that on the table as something to think about and plan for so that we can maybe include that in our strategic plan of trying to reduce this cost and also the, the necessity to have to mow an excess amount of property, I guess, other than the playing fields, which have to be maintained.
Yeah, Craig, how much is the, if you were to break up the mowing work that gets done, do we have it broken out, playing fields, walking paths? And how many hours it takes for everybody to do that work?
It was broken down in the manager's report as attachment one. Where it breaks it down as far as the descriptions, the amount per mow, the total amount, the number of mows that we're paying for. And then it also breaks down the schedules per year. I guess my question was going to be from 2022 to 2023, the grand total is $167,880. And then 2023 is significantly less. So I guess I wanted to understand what is causing the reduction? And can we just authorize it for, on the annual basis?
What, what part are you saying was?
I think 2022 and 2023 are the exact, exact number, 83,940.
But is it required that, it says, I'm looking at on page, I guess this is page 10 of 53, but it's page five in the attachment that I have. It says 2022 and 2023 is a grand total of 167,800? Is it, is it because that's a requirement that we have those two years, or they just combined it and how they told it?
Yeah, they, well, they're, what they're showing is they're not going to increase the cost for 20, for 2023, and then the following page, number nine, attachment one is for 2024, and you'll see an increase.
Yeah, it goes up a little bit.
So the only, they're just showing that there's no change for 2022 and 2023. However, in 2024, there, there is an uptick
Yes.
to 86,949.
Yes. So I guess my question is, can we just authorize it for one year at a time? Do we need to authorize three years in totality at once for that contract?
The bid was for a three-year contract with a two-year option at the end of that.
So we would have to re-release the bid?
Correct.
I get better rates when we're asking for more years at once.
Yeah, if we could lock in for more years, then we do get a better pricing on that.
And so I guess the additional money spent on mulch removal, mulch beds is not included in that total amount?
Right, they break it out. The way the bid proposal paperwork goes is they do the, the mowing schedule that you saw, and then they break out the mulching on the other sheet where they give you a lump sum for each year of the contract. And then the mulch removal is attached three, and they give you a lump sum for that, and then they add that all together to come up with And then they add that all together to come up with the total amount for the three-year contract, which you can see at the bottom of this page is the base bid total plus the alternate bid for the three-year contract is that gets to the 311,089.
So I guess, kind of along with what Tessie was saying, has the EAC or is any staff weighed in as far as the environmental impact of us continuing to move forward with this much mowing and mulching as opposed to transitioning any of our township property to kind of more natural, natural state? With the meadow and, you know, and, yeah.
I'm not sure if the AC has looked at that. They probably have.
Mark Schaefer has his hand raised. He might be able to.
Mark Schaefer has?
Yeah, it's, let's start the video. It's it's on our long-term plan to look at those kinds of things, because that is part of our water resources initiatives. Because not only is reduced mowing, it also improves water quality, because the runoff is slower. Grass is not a really good absorber of rainfall. It's called sheet flow. So it is on our long-term outlook. And armed with this information, we can kind of target some places. Not in time for this particular bid, but hopefully, as we go forward, we could perhaps just say, hey, don't worry about this section. We'll, we'll take care of it some other way. It'll take some planning, but it's on our list.
Thanks, Mark. Can we? Is there any way we can encourage the companies that put the bids out to reduce the amount of pollution they put in the air by mowing? In other words, is there, you know, there must be 100 landscapers in my neighborhood that come in and out, and they all make a lot of noise, and they all make a lot of pollution. And I really dislike that the township is is following in that tradition. So I I think that if we can start thinking about this, along with the other environmental impact that that we might be able to reduce in the coming years, I think that would be much to our benefit, starting today. So please, let's consider that the next time we have to put something out for a bid, or even if we can negotiate after the contract is signed. I think that needs to become an important part, aspect of any bids we put out.
I guess my concern with moving forward today is it's not going to begin until March. Do we have the option to kind of go back and ask for a one-year bid? Or is it in totality, we would have to reissue the proposal, the bid request?
We could eliminate this bid, and we can go out to a one-year bid if you want to do that.
It's going to be a lot more. So question becomes, I I don't think there's an easy, short-term answer to this. There is an environmental impact. I mean, they're using, you know, gasoline engines and so forth when they cut it. I don't think we ever had a study the impact of turning some of the mowed areas into, you know, the, you know, fields that are.
I'm just really talking about the basins. Like, I'm not talking about maybe the obvious properties, but like, we have about five, six, seven basins listed, listed. Those at minimum, I was just thinking, could easily transition much more effectively or without, you know?
Yeah, we have.
If we reduce this a cost, say by $100,000, we can use that money to replace landscaping. Then we wouldn't have to ever pay $100,000 again. So it seems penny foolish, pound, whatever the expression is, to not do some, make that transition.
The the basins are part of the Clean Water Partnership, and they are to be naturalized like the one behind us. So they'll be dug out, made permeable, and plants that are conducive to water absorption in evaporation have to be planted. Now, I don't know where each one of these basins are on our project list. Craig or Jamie, do you know?
They're, they're listed in here, but.
Like, I mean.
Like, we combined some of them, because they're. For instance, the Clayter House, Spring House Barns Detention Basin. That basin was one of the ones that have been natural, well, there's two basins in there that were naturalized. But they're naturalized and like, they're, you know, they're completely vegetated and everything like that. But they are, you know, the surrounding area, like the perimeter, still has to be mowed, because people live directly next door to them, and they don't want them to look unkempt or overgrown. They get concerned about mosquitoes, things like that, so. So really, when you see the basin in here, we're not fully mowing all the basin areas. It's just the the perimeter.
Yeah, even the perimeter can be replaced with native grasses and caricks that don't have to be mowed. So I I really think the township needs to look into this and make sure that we're not contributing more to pollution, but trying to bring our carbon footprint down. So I'm not sure what committee, I guess the EAC is the best one to start looking into this.
I just kind of wanted Mark to expand upon what he was referencing when he said we were going to transition all of the basins.
The base, under the Clean Water Partnership, we have a a project list of hundreds of projects. On the list is an effort by all the township municipalities to unnaturalize the basins. So I don't know, and we we lower wanted township provided input to that spreadsheet as to what what projects are going, that we're going to do that are in, right, that are authorized to be in there. So you have to throw those projects up against the project plan in now the mowing contract to know what basins are going to be naturalized when.
And so is is the is the Clean Water Project, is that indicating that the entirety of the basin? Or are we talking about surrounding portions like Jamie was referencing?
There's, there's going to be parts that we're not, that still need to be mowed. But if you go to a lot of the basins, they're.
No, they don't need to be mowed.
I'm sorry. They they need to be mowed in the plan, but most of the basins were all being naturalized. So where they're currently mowed, when we execute the plan, the the whole thing is mowed today. So when we execute the plan, most of it will not be mowed. There will be a piece around the perimeter that probably will still be mowed, because the residents in the area, they'll be here every night. We don't have an education plan in place for the residents to understand exactly what these basins do and why they're important to naturalize them. So to just do it without any public comment would would potentially be problematic.
So I guess my question now is, do we know what the plan is as far as implementation? Because if we're entering in a three-year mowing contract, that as it stands right now, we're paying for and we're identifying how many times we're going to completely mow, you're saying at some point and in a very near future, that's going to change?
Right.
Essentially changing the contract, so.
Well.
And changing the necessity, the necessity of us to pay what we're indicating we're going to pay now.
But I don't think that's going to be meaningful in the time period that we're in, because that that agreement, we have to come to an agreement with EPA, the EPA, right? And I met with them today to move this along. So once they approve our plan for for Source Point, they have to approve our plan for non-Source Point, which is the project list.
It's our project list. We identified it. What is the execution of the project list plan?
It's going to be, it's going to depend on when they approve it. I would have thought they would have, we would have done two years ago.
Yeah.
Right? But, you know, this is, so far, it's been a five-year effort, and it's kind of stunning that it's taken this long, but it has. And I would hope to have an agreement within a year with the regulators. And once we have an agreement for, with that, and we're working with a county to actually figure out how we're going to, in in what order we're going to execute. Because you want to execute farther up in the in the stream, because the farther up you go, the less siltation will move down. So, but siltation is a problem with the basins, too.
So I understand completely everything you're saying. My only question is, are we making a gamble based upon what you're saying? The the mowing of one basin in and of itself is $705. The next one's $720, and one is $1,065. Are we making an appropriate gamble that we can, we can guesstimate that within three years, we won't be at the point of implementation? We won't be at the point of, well, this will matter? Because I don't necessarily feel comfortable wasting any thousands of dollars.
I I'm agreeing with you, but you're also looking at, Craig, what is the current contract? It was a three-year for an option for a two, wasn't it?
Yes.
Right, so.
So we're, we're at the fifth year.
Right, so I'm saying, in the initial three years of the original, the prior primary contract, what was the, do you remember what the bid was for that?
I do not, I do not. But we have reduced the the cuttings of the basins to every other cut, as you see. And if we have a dry, hot summer, we do call them off, so we reduce cuttings that way, so they're not burning out our fields and stuff. So we have some control over how much we want to cut, so.
So if we get to a point where we say, we no longer want you to cut this basin?
Correct. If you, if we did something on, say, North Bright's Basin, that doesn't need any cutting anymore, we can eliminate that.
Without penalty?
Without penalty.
So then we can move forward, I guess, with EAC identifying how we could also reduce it moving, you know, in the coming years?
Yeah, I I think the EAC's got, is going to have key responsibility in helping implementing the Clean Water Partnership, and that includes our open spaces, how we're treating that the open spaces, mowing being one of them. And, you know, they're, all of this is ramping up like, and and hopefully, within the year, we'll have a lot of this all ramped up and know exactly what we're going to do and when we're going to do it. But we just don't know that right now. They're all good questions, but I also think trying to, trying to go to an annual contract and say, you know, penny, you know, penny wise and pound foolish, because they're going to charge us more for the annual. So my recommendation is still to take the staff's recommendation. And in, and if we can eliminate the mowing contracts, excuse me, we modify the contract based on what what basins are done well, we can, we can still save somebody.
Yeah, I I don't disagree to go ahead with the the contract. As long as we know that going forward, if we reduce the mown area, we can either renegotiate the contract or or it won't, you know, we're not held to those costs, as Danielle was suggesting. But I do want us to make an effort to understand if the company can reduce their environmental impact with their equipment. So that needs to be a discussion, I guess, with you, Fred. See if you can find out.
Yeah, this, this company, Brightview Landscape, is nationwide, so they have a lot of equipment. Perhaps they have dealt with this before. I think their other main office is in California, so they may understand this and may have a lot of information on this.
I I would think so if they're from California, but, you know, there's no pollution controls on lawn mowers and leaf blowers and things like that. The the only recourse might be either to reduce the amount of mowing or go to electric, which is a possibility. Thanks.
We can certainly talk to the Brightview Landscaping Group.
Are there any more questions from supervisors? Any questions from members of the public?
No.
Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up is citizens' comments, concerns, or questions from items not on the agenda. Are, does anyone wish to speak in the audience? I'll take that as a no. No one's raised their hand. Thank you. Craig, manager's report.
Okay, I just want to thank everyone for coming out to the Fall Fest and everyone that worked at Fall Fest, especially Sandy Fight and Kathy Morris. They did a wonderful job putting this together. Definitely more people than I expected to be there. So, so great job. I know Kathy's here, Sandy was here earlier, but had to go. The Pen Ambler Park Basketball, or Courts, Playing Courts, we had a delay. And from the contractor, they are scheduled to start Monday, October 4th now. And just congratulations to Carol again, wishing you a long, happy, healthy retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Comments from the supervisor, Kath?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd also like to thank Sandy and Kathy for a very successful Fall Fest. It's a lot of work, and it paid off. I think everybody really enjoyed themselves. And please pass along the thank yous to your committee members. I'm assuming you'll have some sort of wrap-up meeting. Okay. And yeah, finally, just another big thank you to Carol Colbreath. You would be missed much, and all the success moving forward. Joy those grandkids.
Tessie?
Thank you, Mark. I I would like to thank Carol also for her years of dedication and and hard work. We haven't worked together very long, but, you know, since since I've been here, I've really come to appreciate your your input. So thank you for that. I don't have any other comments. Thank you.
Okay, Tessie, Danielle?
You want to echo anything that's been said thus far? I wanted to congratulate Kathy and Sandy on on a very well-received Fall Fest and everybody else that paid a part in getting the day going. I think it was wildly successful and enjoyable. I specifically enjoyed the coconut ice, so I appreciate that you got them there. And I also wanted to congratulate Carol on her retirement. It's a huge accomplishment, a very exciting one that I hope to embark upon soon in my life. But I haven't known you that well in the working environment, but living in the township, I've seen you on many occasions, always very genuinely pleasant and a smiling face. So I will miss that, and I I just wish you well and hope you enjoy every day.
Okay, I sent a letter or an email out today. You know, I don't have access or haven't had access to a general township involuntary email list. So I asked Jamie, I wrote a thank you email. Somebody's shaking their head, so I guess you got the, you got the email. But it occurred to me, I didn't include the supervisors on the list. So I'm assuming you didn't get the email either. So Jamie, could you, could you send out that thank you email to the supervisors? Because I thought it, I would, it exceeded my expectations. I'm with, I'm with Craig. It did, I didn't know what to expect. Yeah, Kath, you, you, you did a wonderful job. It 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 was, you know, unexpected, and we had the weather. I mean, I was stunned that we got such nice weather. And the night before, I was over at Woodpains Fall Fest. They hold, they love the Montgomery County Community College. And they had at least 1,000 people there. And they have a giant parking lot, and, you know, they had, you know, the beer garden there that must have had half the 1,000 people in it. Things, things that we can't do on a, on a school property. So given all of that, I, and we didn't have fireworks either like they have. How do you, how do you compete against fireworks, right? So pretty tough. But having said all that, we did really well. And I think the time slot was was good. The timing was good, and it was just an excellent overall activity. A lot of people had a lot of fun. And as far as I know, nobody got hurt, no injuries, no, no firemen fell off any ladders or anything. So, so that's a, that that was really good. We had a great police presence there, EMS was there. Of course, the fire trucks are there. Everybody loves loves fire trucks. And those of you who didn't know, that fire truck that had ladder on it, the base level of that fire truck cost was a million and a half, and then you put equipment on it. And then, of course, you have to have a building to put the fire truck in, because you can't park it outside. So fire trucks or, you know, equipment are very expensive. fire trucks and, and equipment are very expensive, but you know, the citizens of Lord Gwinnett deserve, deserve all of that. So Carol, you know, I don't know what more to say. Right? How do you, how do you follow your act? You, you don't. So maybe we can get a picture. We put you on a plaque in the, in the hall. And you know, it's like the Hall of Fame or infamous. I, I can't think of which term is better. But you know, just thank you so much. Good luck. Do not be a stranger, right? We, we'd appreciate a, you know, hello, if you want, a hello every once in a while. And you know, pictures of Tahiti or wherever you wind up going. I'm always interested in pictures of people on retirement. You know, I can look, I can look forward to that. So thank you very much. And I'd like to thank everybody for their attendance. This meeting is closed.